Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I'd like to call the March 19, 2018, meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Ms. Thomas, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Weisberg?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Pardee?
Here.
Mr. Erdl?
Here.
Mrs. Cameron?
Present.
Mrs. Weiss?
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Pardee?
So moved.
Second. No.
Is there any opposition? Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye.
Mr. Erdl? Aye.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All who are able, if you will please, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(coughing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. The minutes, I believe, have been distributed. I don't know if everyone has yet had a chance to review them. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Weiss to approve the minutes, a second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any discussion? Any changes to these minutes? Mrs. Thomas, we take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. At this time, I would entertain an amendment to the agenda to move to the beginning. Before we proceed with comments from the audience, that we go ahead and swear in our interim police chief, Dustin Rogers.
So moved.
Second.
If there is no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisberg?
Aye.
Mr. Sims? Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss? Aye.
Okay. Somewhere -- there you are.[177.19][177.19](laughing) Come up front, please. I, Dustin Rogers,
I, Dustin Rogers,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
to support the Constitution
To support the Constitution.
and laws of the United States of America
and laws of the United States of America.
the Constitution and laws
the Constitution and laws.
of the State of Ohio
of the State of Ohio.
and the Charter and ordinances
and the Charter and ordinances.
of the City of University Heights
of the City of University Heights.
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
as interim chief of police
as interim chief of police.
of the City of University Heights.
of the City of University Heights.
So let me go.
So let me go.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. By ordinance, speakers are limited to five minutes. We do reserve total time allowed to fifteen, given the number of people who are looking to speak. We will be viewing that liberally today, but if you would, please, keep your comments under five minutes. Please be brief and to the point, so we can allow everyone who wants to speak an opportunity to speak and address the city. If you are interested, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record before beginning.
And, as many of you know, I am pro-chicken. So I brought a handout for all of you up there, and you guys know all of my poster. But I wanted to come tonight and dispel some common chicken myths. So the first common myth: Chickens are smelly and dirty. Fact: Chickens spend many hours a day cleaning themselves. It's not the chickens that smell, it's their poop. Chicken produces approximately .125 pounds of valuable fertilizer a day, as compared to an average forty-pound dog that produces .75 pounds per day. So if this ordinance were to pass, even if a resident had four chickens, it would still not produce the waste of a forty-pound dog in a day. And as this ordinance would require, this excrement would have to be dealt with properly so that your yard didn't smell.
Excellent.
Next myth: Chickens hurt property values. Fact: The top ten appreciating housing markets in the United States in 2018 all allow chickens. In fact, one of them, Austin, Texas, as part of their green initiative, actually provides a $75 rebate to anyone who has chickens. Myth: Chickens are noisy. Fact: Hens are not ordinarily noisy. If they do make small intermittent clucking, it's usually about the sound of an average conversation between people face to face. So it's not generally an issue. Living in a neighborhood in a city, people are accustomed to different sounds, like lawn mowers, garbage trucks, and other birds. Residents are generally accept some level of noise pollution as a requisite to living in a neighborhood. If the sound caused by a hen is unusual or unexpected, why should that animal be discriminated against when it doesn't cause an actual problem? Myth: Chickens require a lot of land. Fact: Chickens require no acreage to be kept well. For a chicken to be considered free-range, only 105 feet is required per bird. Myth: Chickens don't belong in cities. Fact: Nearly all major US cities are allowed to keep chickens, including New York City, Boston, Chicago, San Francisco, and Cleveland.
I didn't know that.
Myth: Chickens attract rodents and predators. Fact: Wild animals and rodents are actually already in our neighborhoods. They're attracted to food sources that are easy for them to obtain, such as garbage and wild bird feeders. They're here regardless of whether backyard chickens are here or not. And as part of the ordinance, you're required to keep your coop safe, so those chickens are safe from predators, which also means that the predators and rodents wouldn't have access to food. Myth: Chickens are only kept for egg production. Fact: Chickens are kept for many reasons beyond eggs. They're pets, therapy animals, hobby birds, and can be used for education and outreach projects. Myth: Chickens stop laying eggs at two years of age. Fact: Chickens can live for many years, and although their egg-laying rate may decline and become less predictable, after three years, they can remain good layers for the rest of your life. Fact: Chicken coops are ugly. Oh, that was a myth. Sorry.[567.66][567.66](laughing)
That was a myth. Good job, Laura.
Fact: They don't have to be. They're actually designer chicken coops. You can get one from William &amp; Sonoma. Myth: Chickens require supplemental heat to keep warm in the winter. Fact: Cold hardy chickens actually acclimate quite well to temperatures in the twenties and thirties. Adding a supplemental heat source to a chicken coop impedes that process. And those are my common myths cracked. I hope that the preconceived notions and opinions of some individuals will not prevent the passive ordinance that allows for the freedom of residents to participate in locally grown and substantial, sustainable, and environmentally friendly food practices. And I also wanted to thank all of you on the council so much for all the time and effort that has been put into this. I know you guys didn't think about it lightly, and it's taken a lot of time, and I appreciate all of the effort.
That was smart.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Francis. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Diane Palasix, and I'm here to support the chickens. Laura and Kyle are my next-door neighbor on the driveway side. I have been a resident of University Heights for thirty-nine years, and I've seen a lot of people come and go in that home since the original owners expired. They're the second couple to live there that has taken so much pride and do so many repairs. Their garden's impeccable, their yard's impeccable. They have a tall wrought-iron gate, gated driveway, that has defer to ivy on it. I cannot even see into their area to see if the chickens are there, nor should anybody else, and I'm right on the driveway side. So I ask that you give them this opportunity. I'm not ad-hoc to it at all, and I know many people in the community that are not either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palasix. Next, please. Mr. Miller.
Good evening.
Hi.
I have lived with my family in 2370 Charde Road for over forty years. The ordinance 61820 has been in our bylaws since 1944. That's seventy-four years. It reads, "No person shall keep, harbor, maintain, ehoarse, mew, cat, sheep, goat, swine, rabbit, chicken, goose, or other fowl or animal within 500 feet of the inhabited dwelling of any other person except the dog or cat, or chicken, provided such chicken is kept in conformance with the regulations set forth in section 61825 hereof and subject to the issuance of a special use permit within 500 feet of the inhabited dwelling of any other person." Except, the new ordinance would read exactly the same, but changing the 500 feet to 20 feet. Have you ever asked yourself, "Why?" Why, when it was written seventy-four years ago, 500 feet was inserted? Maybe, just maybe, it was because of the above. The proximity of the homes, potential health conditions, increased noise, odor, potential problems selling our homes. We don't live in a country. A number of people have used the term "new, exciting, and different." Let me explain what I mean by "new, exciting, and different." One, choosing our students here in University Heights who make the honor roll and publishing their names and their faces in the Sun Press once a year. Each one of those students getting a United States savings bond for the excellence and a proclamation from the city. Two, the elderly removing the snow and cutting the grass. Three, salt every street. Four, sidewalks are flat. Five, signage for City Hall on the grass, on the mound. Used to love it when I drove by, and so did thousands of other cars with city. Fire department, the accommodations improved and the staffing increased. Police cars, cleaned and the city's name prominently displayed on the car. A new wheelchair lift. Cedar Center, becoming a draw-up by doing any number of things and hooking up with South Euclid. We'd have art shows, Christmas lights, strolling musicians, and having a Cedar Center food These ideas, to me, are new, exciting, and different. In conclusion, I ask you only one question. Will the quality of our lives, who live in this city, be enhanced by passing this ordinance? I say no, and so do a number of other residents. Thank you for the time.[962.12][962.12](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Druzaek.
Thank you, Ms. Druzaek. Tammy Druzaek, I live on
Cedar Brook Road?
Please, let me get my phone. Sorry. (inaudible). Tammy Druzaek, and I live on Cedar Brook Road. I have a home that, based on what the new ordinance would read, won't even accommodate the chickens, which I'm very sad about, because I too would very much put a coop in my backyard and raise chickens. It's not going to hinder my neighbors, it's not going to hinder my quality of life, their quality of life, and it will increase the chickens' quality of life, to have a good chicken owner. So for those of you that are concerned about, as Laura put it, you know, the myths versus the facts, I ask that you do more due diligence. Responsible due diligence, because your feelings are not due diligence. They need to be factual. And chickens are not dirty, chickens are not smelly, and there will be no roosters. And I've had this argument with a dozen different people that I thought were fairly educated that they thought you needed a rooster to have a chicken laying egg. You don't. So please consider the ordinance for chickens as a yea, as opposed to a nay. I think it will increase the quality of life for those who get the special use permit, follow the rules, do the class, and have productive egg-laying chickens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Druzaek.
You'll have to bear with me a little bit, because I'm contagious, but I'm getting over my armpits. Richard Passo, 2604 Sabre Brook Road. I've been around chickens. My father was around chickens, and I wish he was here to tell you what chickens are like. The myths are all true. You can Google, go into Tractor Supply out in Charde, talk to the people that live in Burton as to what their ordinance are. If you think about what Mr. Miller was saying, the original ordinance was 1944. What was University Heights like? It was former farmlands. They were building up houses. My house, that was built in 1938, was one of the newer houses back then. So we had a lot of open areas. Back then, people wanted University Heights to be homes, not farmlands. Chickens are not pets, number one. They're farming animals. They do smell, they are noisy. If you go and look up the ordinance, say, in Burton, their ordinance reads almost identical to ours, except they talk about the fencing around the coop and the area that it needs to be in has to be fenced, buried down, because the rats that show up. They do attract coyotes, they're predators. We have skunks, we have raccoons, we have possums now, they're problems. You can smell the skunks coming out that way. They attract them. They are also additional predators that they do attract. We have hawks that sit in our fence in the mornings all the time. They'll be around even more. They're not looking for pigeons anymore, they're looking for the chickens. You have to do daily baking. The rats are attracted by the food and the poop. You can go online. I've printed out a whole bunch of stuff when I was clarifying what I knew, and that is chickens are smelly, they are noisy. Burton requires them to be set back 500 feet from the nearest residence, and that's because of the noise. You know, you can just go on and on about all the myths. They are farming animals. One of the parts of the ordinance, the original ordinance, back in 1944, was two pets per household. So if you have chickens, that means you have to get rid of your dogs. You can't have dogs if you've got four chickens, because you have more than enough pets. So this is just something that will turn around and snowball. You get the chickens, then the ducks come. We're not Mayfield Village, we're not Shaker, we're not Cleveland Heights, our yards are small. I can't put an addition, I can't enclose the backyard, my back porch, because by the ratio of building to land, because where I live, it's curved, and I have a very small backyard, I can't put an addition in, but I can cram in a chicken coop. The back frontage is at 20 feet? The other day, it was said that it was three feet from the rear property line that the coop can be, is that it? Still 20 feet all the way around, or is it 20 feet from the sides and three feet from the back?
Luke, do you want to clarify that, please?
Twenty feet from any dwelling, Okay. Ten feet from any property line, side yard property line, and three feet from the rear property line.
Okay. There are six houses right in a row, three on each side of me. We would not be able to sit in our patios, because our patios are in the back. So I would sit in my patio, my neighbors would sit in their patio, and we're within three feet of a chicken coop, which means we're in the noise, we'll also turn around and have the smell. And chickens do produce a lot of waste. You talk about it's only, it's less than a forty-pound dog. Well, that's every day. Look at our community park as to what's going on there, and people aren't picking up their food. How long does it take that you don't go out and start picking up the food, because it's cold or because it's raining? Chickens will eat everything that's green up there out. That's why they're dirty. They love the dust and the dirt, and they roll in it. That's why they also have to be cleaned daily. And it's not a myth. You can go online, you can Google pros and cons, you'll get experts on farmyard animals, et cetera. You'll get, quote, "experts on urban living with chickens." And think of the size of most yards in University Heights. I've lived here for almost sixty years, except when I was in the Navy. And the first year I got married, I've always been in University Heights. I can literally go around and point to each house how big their yards are and where the large yards are. You have one side of Meadowbrook, yards are big. You have another side of Meadowbrook, that they're -- you can get a garage. You have Eaton Road, where you actually had one of the two forests in University Heights because of the way University -- because the way Eaton runs straight. You have Meadowbrook, curbed way, and all of a sudden, you're going down to Asher's, that you have, fifty years ago, the deer were back in there. The city was constantly trying to do something with all the woods that were back in there. So again, most yards in University Heights are too small to support a chicken coop and make it enjoyable for the surrounding neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Passo.[1460.23][1460.23](applause)
Hi. My name is Kyle Coughlin, and I'd like to read you guys just a short snippet from an article that was published in freshwater Cleveland a year after Cleveland Heights chickens were approved. The article is called "Pets With Benefits: How Urban Chickens Are Helping to Build Community." It's been one year since the City of Cleveland Heights amended its zoning code to allow residents to keep chickens, and already eighteen owners, or homeowners, have taken the plunge, and six more are slated to join the flock this month. Despite a handful of vocal residents predicting a chicken-induced apocalypse as a result of this legislation, there has been almost zero blowback, as city officials say. As more and more residents welcome chickens into their backyards, more and more of their neighbors are discovering that there was nothing to get their feathers ruffled over in the first place. In contrast to what some might believe, hens are quieter than barking dogs and less dangerous should they escape their confines. Less destructive on the local fauna than marauding felines, and rather than attract pests, chickens actually devour them at a staggering clip. Flies, fleas, ants, mosquitoes, slugs, and even mice are no match for the scratch and peck patrol of hungry hens. And then there are the eggs, farm-fresh, delivered for free, and untainted by the chemicals and guilt that accompany every dozen factory-farmed grocery store egg. As more communities grapple with the decision of whether or not to allow residents to keep hens, and they should, it's no coincidence that 70% of Forbes' most desirable cities happen to be chicken-friendly. They will look to places like Cleveland Heights, and hopefully University Heights, for guidance and information. In that year, in the year after allowing chickens, a resident reports that the experience has been as enjoyable and educational for him and his family as he hoped it would be. But what he didn't expect was how simple, how the simple practice of keeping chickens would actually improve his relationships with his neighbors. He said that giving away eggs had become a fun way to meet new people on the block, that several neighbors had brought their chickens over to feed the birds, and that he was actually able to meet new neighbors that he never thought he would. That is precisely the kind of story that city officials in Cleveland Heights love to hear. If the original intent of the new sustainability rules was to make the city more desirable, make the city a more desirable place to live, what better way to accomplish that, by fostering better relationships with, between residents? The Cleveland Heights City Planner was quoted saying, "When we wrote the code, that outcome was not something, was not something I necessarily would have predicted, but it's one of the most positive aspects of it. It's actually fostering community." Thank you.[1629.62][1629.62](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Coughlin.
My name is Paul Nickerson. I've been on South Belvoir since 1976, and by chance, this was pure blind chance, I saw online an article by the CDC, Center for Disease Control, Federal Health Agency, and the title of it was "Salmonella in Backyard Poultry Blocks." How specific can that article be? And what they said is, "In 2017, there were 1,150 cases of salmonella." Salmonella is a gut bacterial infection causing nausea, vomiting, fever, cramps. It's usually self-limited. By that, I mean, you usually don't rush out and get antibiotics, but the report said there were 1,170 cases of salmonella in those specific, that specific instance, backyard poultry in 2017 in 48 states. 249 or 259, I can't recall, were hospitalized with one death. So it's not innocuous. It's not an innocuous condition, salmonella, in this particular circumstance. And in fact, one thing that they added, that I think is even more curious and should be taken seriously, is the CDC recommended that children younger than five years of age or older than 65 adults should not go, touch chickens under those circumstances. They have lower immune systems, and therefore, they're more susceptible to such an infection. So I'm not saying I'm pro, I'm not saying I'm con on this issue specifically, but I want you to take this as a fact, as close to a fact as you can get, having been made up or published by the CDC. Thank you.[1752.33][1752.33](applause)
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nick Trancito. I live on Traymore. Speaking of Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights, I know some people who have chickens and have chickens, and coyotes are coming and killing them. I know a lot of people have dogs, and that's not a very good thing for dogs. And if they're going to attract coyotes, it's one thing to attract mice and rats, but the coyotes are a little bit different of an animal. So we have dogs, we have a lot of dogs on the street. That would be quite concerning to me. Also, we live on a triangle, at the end of the triangle, University and Traymore. There are no more, no less than There are no more, no less than five houses that have bought to us, by no more than 20, 15 feet. So if this was to pass, I could conceivably have three to four yards with chickens in. I don't think that this 20 feet, if anything happens, is sufficient. And I like what the gentleman had in the old ordinance, where it was 500 feet, because the other gentleman who said this is, these are zoo, I mean zoo, farm animals, I think is quite correct. We're trying to show a square hole, a round peg into a square hole, especially in this city. When I've got a yard that's 20 by 15, 20 by 30, and I have the opportunity to have four, three, four properties adjacent to mine with chickens, that's not good. And I don't care what you say, I don't think that's good for resale value. So I thank you for the time, and hopefully you considered the right way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening to all. My name is Charles Evans. I live on Meadowbrook Boulevard. I've been living in University Heights since 1985. But prior to 1985, I lived in Andover, Ohio, on a chicken farm. I grew up with chickens. My father had as many as 1,500 chickens. They required constant care. We had certain types of feed we had to give them to keep them healthy. We had a certain type of water we had to feed them to keep infections out. But most of all, the biggest problem is, we had to put stuff in metal containers to keep rodents and other things out of the feed, which would contaminate the feed. Also, when you think about chickens, chickens require care like anything. Chickens will defecate wherever they feel like it, just like any other animal. And the question being, what do you do with the waste? In our farm, we just have to collect the waste on a daily basis, put in what we call a honey wagon, take it to the field, and we distribute it across our fields, which we then would turn under and plow to grow your crops, believe it or not. But being us in May, I grew up on a farm, I grew up around chickens, and I don't want chickens in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
My name is Darlene Thompson, 387th Street, Red Mill. And after coming to the last meeting about chickens, I decided to go online and educate myself a little more, plus listening to my husband, who also raised chickens. And it seems like, at one point, there was a need and depression, this was a good way for people to have their food. Now it seems like a fad. The country is no longer where people are doing chickens, it's now coming to the city. I'm not sure we need to compare two other cities, other than look at our own, only because lots are different, and the homes and what have you, it's all very different. I'm on a 40-foot lot. If I fall off my drive, I'm on someone else's property. I already have a diesel truck, blowing diesel spews in my yard. I have put up with a Great Dane pooping that never got taken care of, except once a week in nice weather, and then all winter it sat there. And I have always had a dog, except for seven of the 47 years I lived here. I had little children, babies. I had one-year-old when I moved in. And I can tell you, if these young people, or old people, whoever want these chickens, think that it's exciting and fun, animals are work. And my children didn't want to participate in that. They didn't want to have anything to do with the work part. And the man is right, I told you that the other day, the family park is not only filled with dog poop that doesn't get cleaned, it's also filled with dogs running loose. Yesterday, my husband was almost tripped by our dog's leash, because a man with two dogs walked one on a leash and one was loose. And to be honest with you, I don't come up here to City Hall and all the departments complaining about my neighbors' issues that affect me, because I'm trying to keep peace. When you're that close, that you can spin in your neighbor's window, you really don't want to be starting fights with your neighbors. And when I read online, is that even if these laws were passed, whatever the rules and regulations were, the immediate neighbors had a right to say they didn't want these chickens living next door to them, and they couldn't have them. So I don't know what you plan on doing, but my dog is going to bark at chickens. I don't let my cat run loose. He's an indoor cat with no claws. But all these cats that shouldn't be running loose, that aren't domestic pets to people, their cats are going to be out, and are the chickens going to claw them and kill them? I don't know. I mean, I'd be devastated if my cat didn't come home one night, which is why my cat's not an outdoor cat. I think there's going to be a lot of nuisance calls to you. Walter Stinson used to have to take care of that. I don't think you want to be dealing with that. I think you have bigger issues. I know, I just did call today about the corner of Traymore and Saybrook, where it used to say stop on the street, it no longer does. Someone stopped, they never stopped again, and almost hit me, but I knew to stop, because I knew that was what it was. So I talked to Mike from the side department, you can ask him what we talked about, but I do think you have bigger issues to deal with in this city, that you don't have to be dealing with people about chickens and all the things and encounters. I am not in favor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dempsey. Just, just to clarify, was that the intersection of Traymore and Saybrook that's missing a stop sign?
It's not missing a stop sign. I don't know how to explain it exactly. It's like a five-way stop, and it just be that you stop.
Isn't it painted?
And you come west from Warrensville, and the street had painted lines, and then on the street it was painted stop.
Right.
All right, thank you.
And now it no longer says that, so this person stopped at his stop sign. I had stopped before him, and he didn't stop when he moved up, he proceeded and cut right in front of me, and made a turnaround and vanished. If I had hit him, I would have fallen, because he would say, there was no stop sign and nothing written in the street.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
I don't think that's wrong, it was not just chickens.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey.
Hello, my name is Mary Fox. I live at 3630 Meadowbrook. And I agree with all the other comments, so I'll just keep mine pretty short. I am opposed to having chicken coops. And speaking of our neighboring communities, I have a friend that lives on Oak Road in Cleveland Heights, and he shared with me that, yes, he had a neighbor that had a chicken coop, and it was a nuisance. And finally, it was gone. So, you know, because they're close in proximity, the noise, the smells. Those were his exact words. I also have a question regarding the original ordinance citing 500 feet. How do you go from 500 feet to 20 feet? What prompted that? How did you come up with that number? You understand my question?
Yes, Councilman Wiseman, would you like to answer that?
Thank you, yes, yes.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fox. I'll answer it. It's not that we went from 500 feet to 20 feet. The original ordinance was passed in the 40s, so we weren't really using that as a baseline. In the 40s, there were a great many homes with large yards, people had acres, there were, most of the neighborhoods that we have today weren't here back then. So it's not like we started it with 500 feet as a reference point. We used other ordinances, specifically other ordinances in the area, that there are suburban neighborhoods just like ours, and we came up with the measurements, because those, we just decided that those measurements looked like measurements that were enough for us. So 20 feet from a dwelling, 10 feet from a side yard. 10 feet from the side yard, and 5 feet from a rear yard.
I think it's 3 feet from a rear yard.
Most rear yards in the city back up to another rear yard. So my rear yard isn't, well, my rear yard isn't a good example, because there's apartments behind my house, but most rear yards have a fence line, and then, and then there's another rear yard. So that the reason it's only 3 feet is because there's, you know, 80 or 100 or so feet till the next house.
And it should also be noted that where the rear yard does not go up against a rear yard, but goes up against a side yard or a street, then it's also then 10 feet. It's only 3 if it's a rear yard against a rear yard.
Right, right. And the Board of Zoning Appeals, which will approve every chicken coop in the city, will decide if the coop is far enough from the property next to it or behind it, that it not only complies with the ordinance, but complies with the spirit of the ordinance. So if it's the case that a rear yard is next to a side yard, they're not going to, they're not going to allow it, or they'll make it, they'll make the resident move it more. So it's, so it's in compliance with the rest of the statute. You can't just go put up a chicken coop, you have to get a permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And take a class, I might add, from the metro parks, I think, to our class, to teach you how to be a responsible chicken owner.
Okay, I have a question. Do you want to be responsible with the pets they have now? So that then it could be in the middle of a backyard, the chicken coop? So you could be having your patio next to it, and you have to move it off the side.
If you'd like to address the city council, you have an opportunity to come to the podium. Thank you.
Okay, so one more question I have is, Ms. Francis wanting to build a chicken coop, and so she's inquired about getting a permit to build a chicken coop? Yes.
You're looking for legislative history on the chicken coop?
Are you applying for a permit to build a chicken coop?
No. So I don't, I don't know if it's appropriate to actually ask questions of other people in the audience who have testified today. I mean, I don't know what their, what their plans are, but I don't.
But the answer to the question is that the regulations do not require a building permit for construction. They require issuance of a special use permit by the Board of Zoning Appeals, provided that the applicant can demonstrate that they meet the setback requirements and the educational requirement that's mandated by the regulations.
Okay, so if I wanted to build another structure in my backyard, I don't have to get a permit first?
No, that's a completely different issue. You're talking about like building a shed, or a garage, or something?
Same dimensions as a chicken coop.
Okay, well, this is on chicken coops.
Okay, so if I wanted to build a chicken coop, I can build it, and I don't have to have a permit to build it?
No, you have to apply for a special use permit with the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's the proposal in the ordinance. So there would be review by the Building Commissioner, as the law director indicated, and you would go before the BZA. And the BZA would hold a meeting and make sure that you, that your plan complies with the ordinance. If it doesn't, you're not going to get the permit. If it does, then presumably you would get the permit, and that permit is for one year. So after that, it would be up for renewal. And if there was an issue then, then the BZA would likely be hearing it. Also, the ordinance is now amended. We're looking at having a public meeting in February to check and see how we're doing on this, presuming we do pass this. So that if we do have problems, as some have suggested we might, we can address it then.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Justin Gould. I'm a neighbor of Laura's, and I support her ability to have chickens in the backyard. I hope that my neighbors and I are able to work together on issues that we have, without being accused of having, starting fights with one another. And more importantly, I hope that my government can get out of the way and allow me to use my property, and my neighbors to use their property, given that there's regulations that can address certain issues that we have. But I hope that the solution isn't to disallow certain use, if there is a way to create an ordinance that has regulated the behavior that is seeking to be had in the backyard. In this case, I've read the ordinance, I think it's well-written, and I think it addresses many of the issues that people have brought up, that there is an education component, that there are length requirements away from side yards and backyards, that there's a requirement for a run, that the coop has to be covered, that it has to be predator-proof, that the run has to be predator-proof, that if these chickens are out in a yard, the yard has to be fenced. And then there is a relation to the rest of the laws that we have in the city, including fencing requiring that there be a survey done to the land to identify now the perimeters of the land, which is a huge investment for someone who just wants to put chickens in their backyard. And so I think that people like Ms. Francis, who are going to invest in this, to learn about this, to go to a class, to sit in numerous meetings, it's not something that one can do just on the side. There are, there have been questions about coop, that's addressed inside of the statute. That the ordinance requires that it be stored no closer to 5 feet from somebody's side yard. And I think that if there are issues, that this council has made clear that it's willing to listen to them, that these permits are only issued for one year at a time, and that nobody has really brought up an issue that could not be addressed through regulation, and hasn't been addressed through regulation. And I remember when Laura first filed her request, everyone in our region got a notification. Like, I got a notification, her a direct, and I'm up on, up a hill from her, and then the neighbors like across the street from me, like on a different street, got notified. Like, everyone would have the opportunity to show up and let you all know, either by email, or telephone call, or showing up in person, how they thought about chickens. And I don't know of any of our neighbors that I've spoken with, or that have shown, shown up to any of these hearings, that are against Laura being able to have chickens. And now maybe that's different in some other place. I know that the number of permits is limited to 25 in the city, but I don't think that chickens are going to be taking over. I think that there's a lot of hysteria about cat-killing, and, you know, whatever else these chickens are going to be doing. I think that the idea that a chicken would create a bigger nuisance in drawing predators to the area in a predator-proof coop than trash left out, or blown in from Cleveland Heights on Trash Day, because they leave just empty bags on the side of the street, is no larger an issue than the chickens. So that's sort of the reasons that I'm in favor, and I hope that you will approve the ordinance for this limited period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gould.
Hello, my name is Suzette Stanitz. I live on Lailamont Road. I'm lucky enough to be a second-generation homeowner. I love, absolutely love my home, love my city. I love sitting out in the backyard on summer nights, having a nice beverage. I don't want to listen to chickens. I don't want to smell chickens. We have kids, a ton of kids on Lailamont. I give out over 350 pieces of candy on Halloween, that's how many kids we have. The kids are running all over, every time, imagine if the kids are running through the yards, which I love, they're my security system. Every time the chickens hear the kids, they'll be startled, and we'll have to listen to the chickens. I just, I want to make it short. I just, I'm so opposed to chickens in University Heights, so I hope you really think this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stanitz.
I wanted to ask a question about the distances, that you mentioned you weren't using 500 feet as a baseline, and you looked at other cities and came up with this 20 feet, right? So did you use the housing density of University Heights compared to Shaker Heights, and compared to Cleveland Heights, when you came up with these calculations? So do you think that that's different between the cities, the housing density?
Yeah, so, so I, I.
I mean, 5 feet, I'm not even 5 feet to you. I mean, I'm farther away than 5 feet from you right now.
And you're meaning to say?
I'm meaning to say, I think that if you did this, that these dimensions, these distances are way out of whack for where we live, way out of whack. I think that if somebody has the land to do it, they should be allowed to do it. And I think that, again, like I said in my first comments, I've got four houses there. I don't want three, four people having chickens 3, 4, 5, 10 feet from me. I don't think that's fair. And I think that you really need to look at the density of the housing here, compared to Cleveland Heights and Shaker Heights. I don't begrudge somebody to have a chicken, they've got the room for it. But I don't think there's a lot of places with room for it in the city. And so when you hear a lot of these people, you come to infringe on, not their rights, but just infringe on them, in ways that you never expected, living in a suburban area like this. So I just hope you consider the density and the size of these lots. So I just hope you consider the density and the size of these lots when you come up with this. That's, that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, what was the street?
Sure, go ahead.
Sir?
What was?
What street did you say you lived on?
Trangor.
Okay, you said you lived in an area where there were five of Trangor.
We live on the corner, but not on, for the last time I saw Trangor, it was University comes in. Okay? So there's a house on the corner, which butts up to us.
Okay.
There's another house on University.
Yes.
That butts up to us. There's a house on, what is it?
Next to University, there's three in a row that butt to us.
One of them's not on University, Jack's house is not on University. Jack's, yeah, so we have three houses on University. There's actually a fifth one that could be considered Sabro?
No.
That comes right up to us like that. The house on the corner.
Yep.
And there's three of them on University.
Okay, have you spoken?
All of their backyards are, right, they're backyards, I've got what I call a postage stamp.
Okay.
Their backyards are smaller than mine.
Okay, so have you spoken to these neighbors?
About what, this?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No, I just found out about this.
Oh, okay.
I'm new to the game.
All right, that's okay.
I, I, I just found out.
Okay, thank you.
But, all right, this is 2591 Trangor, you can look at any of those areas.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trancito. Just, just, just for the record, I, I know Councilman Wiseman said he hadn't looked at this, but, but just to clarify the record, I did look at it. And the, the population density of University Heights is 7,292 people per square mile. Lakewood, in comparison, which does have a chicken ordinance, their population density is 9,426.9 people per square mile, also happens to be the highest population density in the state of Ohio.
I'm talking about housing, housing, housing density, the land, the properties, not the people. You can have 10 people in every house. And that's not even the true population.
Sure, I understand.
I'm talking about the housing density, the land per square foot.
Okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
All right, well, thank you for addressing the council. If there's anybody further who care to address the council, if there's anybody further who would care to address the council, if you would please come to the podium and state your name and speak.
My name is Dr. Jeff Green, my wife and I have lived 2568 Eaton Road, University Heights, for 36 years. Learned a couple of new things tonight. We've gotten to the point, if we've gotten to the point that chickens are called therapy animals, I think we've got a lot deeper problems in our society. But I guess if people are taking peacocks on airplanes, it's the same thing. I, I'd like to just try to understand the desire to want to do this. I mean, if it's, if it's fresh eggs, you can go out in Jock County, and there's plenty of places where you can go buy fresh eggs, if that's your issue. I mean, I, I just have a hard time understanding why this is necessary. I mean, I thought we were moving forward in the society, not, not progressing backwards to barnyard animals behind people's houses. I guess, and then I have another question. I'm looking at your agenda, and it says the Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council was not to approve it. Is that correct? That's the current recommendation? And what was the Planning Committee's reasoning?
Well, I was there and voted, and health and safety issues.
Okay. And...
And for my, for me, myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
The previous tall gentleman in the suit that spoke gave, gave a nice summary of some of the surveillance that's going to have to go on for this. Who's going to pay for all that? Who's going to do that to make sure that the proper rules are being followed?
Building, building.
Building?
I'm all in.
What, what's their training and background to be able to do that?
They would have the training to oversee the, the coops.
Okay, and, and who, and we as a city fund that additional cost, is that correct?
We as a city have a building department whether we pass this ordinance or not.
Right, but the, but the building, but the building department will have additional activities to do, and it's quite likely that it may, may take more time, right?
Well, there is a certain amount of time per day that they work, and there would be up to 25 permit holders, should this ordinance pass.
Okay, I guess the last thing I would say is, is I don't believe everything I read on the internet. You'd never know if the Russians are involved or not. I would, I would be inclined to listen to the gentleman who lived and worked in that environment much more than I would on an internet page. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, my name's Dr. Janice Snyder, I am living at, let's see, I'm on Charny Road. I would like to point out that I am not a medical doctor, but instead I am professor of biology at Ursula College, and I teach microbiology. And to the gentleman that was kind enough to do his research about salmonella and its associated outbreaks the CDC had talked about and reported upon, I think that was very due diligence. And I am in favor of chickens, and I also read the study, because I wanted to obviously read up about these issues and see if it would be an impact to the community. And the reality is, is that salmonella is more of a direct contaminant. So I actually, if you guys don't mind, would like to pull up the CDC's recommendations. So live poultry should be kept outdoors at all times. Believe it or not, there are some people that had these outbreaks that were allowing their chickens inside their home. You should be washing your hands thoroughly with soap and water, right after touching live poultry, their eggs, or anything in the area where they live and roam. Do not snuggle, kiss, or hold live poultry close to your face. So that was another problem, because again, some people do view chickens as pets, that's a matter of opinion. Really are some people that do choose to use these chickens as their pets, just like some people have rats as pets. Cook eggs until both the yolk and white are firm. Clean any equipment or materials used to care for live poultry outside the house. Children under the age of five, adults over the age of 65, and people with immune, sorry, excuse me, people with weakened immune systems should not touch or handle live poultry. These are the recommendations from the CDC. None of these are dealing with neighbors having chickens. However, in my research, salmonella can be airborne, if there is dirty conditions. And so my concern would be if my neighbors had a very, very dirty chicken coop, and we had, if we were very, very close to each other, and if there was very, very strong winds. But if people are keeping the chickens as they're supposed to be, and they're cleaning up their messes, which are, generally speaking, chickens don't produce that much mess, this shouldn't be a problem. However, those that are intending to keep chickens should be keeping a very, very safe environment for themselves and for their children. But I don't think that this should be any sort of issue. If my neighbors choose to have chickens, that's great, as long as they're keeping their chicken coop clean, there shouldn't be any problems whatsoever, so. I'm definitely in favor of chickens, and I think that it's very good that people have been looking into some of the problems that might exist, but I honestly do not believe salmonella should be one of the ones that we should be concerned about.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the doctor's name?
Oh, this was Dr. Snyder, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Richard Franco again, about the...
Yes, if you could be brief, because you have already addressed us, and I know others are waiting.
But I just wanted to address about the dimensions.
Okay, if you could, you keep it to 30 seconds?
Right.
Thank you.
Aren't most residents in University Heights, a lot is only about 50 feet wide, 55 feet wide? Have we thought about rentals? Are rentals going to be able to come in and get a permit? And the other thing was about, we ought to be able to do what we wish to our land, the government shouldn't be enforcing and putting rules on it. I love nature, I hate cutting my grass, so why do I have to cut my grass?
Okay, thank you. For clarification, the ordinance applies to, would apply to U1-zoned housing, so that would be single-family homes, and I believe that would apply whether their owner occupied or rented. Thank you.
June Stannitz, 14157 Washington Boulevard. Mayor, could you please explain any communication you've gotten from residents in the city that, from people who weren't able to be here tonight?
I've gotten several emails, letters, voicemails, phone calls, one-on-one communications, both pro and con.
Could you roughly give us an estimate, what those ratios were like?
About 50/50.
50/50?
Yes.
Okay.
With some, with some of the, and I should qualify that, some of the people that were against were for, once they heard some of the provisions that had been added. For instance, there were people who were against it until they found out there was an educational component, because they were concerned about the animal's safety. Then there were people who were against it till they found out that there would be no roosters. Then there were people who were against it until they found out that, that a, you know, what the setback limitations were, and that some yards simply wouldn't accommodate one regardless. And some were against it until they found out that there was an amendment to make it a temporary, basically a pilot program, to try this out, see how it works. And we're willing to see how it works, give it a benefit, benefit of the doubt, and, and try it and see, and if it doesn't work out, then evaluate it then, or if it does work out, then say, hey, you know, it did work out.
So is there going to be a problem evaluating afterwards, an ordinance is already put into place?
Yes.
Is there, if this ordinance is passed?
Yes.
What would be the procedure if it doesn't work out?
Council would then have to repeal it.
And then, that's a procedure to do that, right?
It's, it's passage of legislation, it's, it's the same thing.
And what exactly is the oversight for these chicken coops? I mean, do you wait until there are complaints? Do you wait till there's one complaint, or 10 complaints? Or is somebody going to go there and check up on things to make sure they're run correctly? What, what is the oversight procedure that you have in place?
The oversight is that we would, we have a building department, so the building department certainly can receive any complaints. So if there's a nuisance that's occurring, the provisions of the ordinance do not permit a nuisance. So that would be something that could be looked at from an enforcement standpoint through the building department. In addition to that, the special use permit that's issued expires after one year, and requires an applicant to reapply to the BZA each year. Once a year is expired, and neighbors are invited to attend those hearings, those Board of Zoning Appeals meetings are quasi-judicial in nature. That means that the board is required to take evidence, so if there's evidence of a nuisance, or some kind of problem, the board would have the discretion to deny the renewal of the permit.
So it sounds like quite a lengthy procedure, that people would have to be putting up with the nuisances while this is discussed and resolved?
I think it depends on what's going on.
Okay, and how many people have applied for this so far? Or are interested?
Well, you know, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, the ordinance hasn't passed yet.
But you've had interest from how many people?
We've, we've had interest from one household so far. We've had, I mean, by, and we've had varying degrees of interest from other households, but, but, you know, we're not asking people to apply for a, a chicken coop when we haven't passed the ordinance yet.
Okay, so not a lot of people have come forward yet?
Well, no, because there's no law in place at this point.
And I'm just looking, and it's interesting, too, in the wintertime.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, when we have those terribly cold, bitter cold days, when a lot of people don't even go out with their dog, how do you maintain an outside chicken coop during those winter months? Water?
Mm-hmm.
A path to the coop? It's my understanding that chickens can't live just in the coop, they need some roaming space.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes, I believe that was addressed by another speaker. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amy Hamilton, I live at 3805 Westwood Road, I'm a University Heights resident. I have a couple of questions. One is, there's been some talk about, oh, well, your neighbors will be notified if you're, if you want to have a chicken coop. But if they meet the specifications, what can the neighbor do?
Initially, the neighbor can comment on it, but the Board of Zoning Appeals essentially will be granting a special use permit if the conditions of the ordinance are met. That is not necessarily what will happen upon renewal. Renewal will be an evidentiary hearing, so that any neighbor could testify about nuisance conditions or any other problems.
But initially, it's sort of...
Initially, initially, yeah.
...then many things a neighbor can do, so the idea that, oh, well, you know, I get noticed, and all these people can come, is really kind of meaningless, because if they meet the setback requirements, then they have to issue.
That's correct. The, the thought process was that rather than simply have someone go to the building department and have a coop appear in their backyard, that neighbors be notified, and that the board conduct the review, so that they can tweak a site plan, or respond to any concerns that can be addressed at the time of the hearing. But you're correct, that if someone is submitting a site plan that complies with the setback requirements and the education requirement, then the board will be obligated to issue the permit.
And then, with regard to the fence, I know that right now the city allows chain-link fences. So, that means somebody could put up a chain-link fence, so there's still, you know, what does that really do? It doesn't help the site, it doesn't help smell, it doesn't help, and, you know, so will it still be permitted to have a chain-link fence?
Ah, yes.
And then in terms of the setbacks, I'd just like to say, picking up on what Suzette Stanitz said, I think those setbacks are not even nearly enough. I mean, you're talking about, what, how many per side yard?
10.
10 feet, so you're talking about, I, like, probably many people here like to eat on my patio almost every night in the summertime, and so I could, you know, theoretically, what's 10 feet, just around 10 feet for me? I could be eating my dinner, and there could be a chicken coop right next to me? I mean, I, I just don't see that that's really a tangible situation aesthetically, or any other way, you know, for a city this size. And with regard to repealing it, what are you going to do with the chickens in the coops? Are they going to be grandfathered in? Are they going to be destroyed? I mean, what are you going to do if somebody, after a year, you say, you know what, oh, we don't want these anymore? What happens to those two?
There's no grandfathering, so that'll be the owner's problem, so to speak. They will have to figure out a way to remove those items, and to figure out what to do with their chickens.
So I guess in closing, I'd just like to say what many people have said here, which is, I really don't understand why the council is considering amending our zoning ordinances to accommodate farm animals, and what appears to be, you know, not a tremendous amount of support, although, Mayor, you said that, you know, 50% are in favor of it, but, you know, we're a little community with little lots in the city, and personally, I don't see the need for it, and I don't see why we're amending these zoning ordinances that have been in effect for, you know, since 1940. And finally, it's, some people have said this sort of, in joking, but really, why not go, right? I mean, what's next? Maybe I want to have milk. And, you know, they're not necessarily going to have a dog. So, you know, we have zoning ordinances, everybody would like to do whatever they want to do with their land, but they can't. Somebody said they can't even build a shed without a building permit. But now you can build a coop without a building permit, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Brennan.
Good evening.
And Council. My name is Mike Bishop, my friends and I are students at John Kew University, and we're here to provide a brief intermission to the chicken coop debate for this evening. Anyway, though, we are all members of the Student Union, which is our student government body, and we sit on the Committee for Community Relations and Service. And so primarily, our reasoning for being here this evening is simply introduce ourselves for the semester, since we've had sort of a change in guard, and also provide our email addresses, should Council or Mayor Brennan have any issues that they'd like to address directly to students, we'd certainly love to be a conduit for that conversation. So again, my name is Mike Bishop, my email address, you'd like to write it down, is And I'll pass it off to some of your friends.
Thanks a lot, that's great.
It sure is nice to hear from University Heights residents, and not Beechwood residents. My name is Pierce Rail, and my email is psrail19@jcu.edu.
My name is Alexis Bifro, my email is abifro19@jcu.edu. Thank you.
My name is Colin Derrig, and my email is cderrig21@jcu.edu. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sam Ally, my email is sally... My email is S-A-L-A-I one eight at jcu.edu.
Thank you, Council. Additionally, there is one issue I'd like to bring up that is bothering some of my fellow students. It's been brought to our Student Union, and Mayor Brennan, last week, when you were at our Student Union meeting, it was something that was addressed as well. There is a different ordinance that is on the books now that is prohibitive for students renting properties in University Heights. Right now, to my knowledge, the ordinance reads that no more than three unrelated individuals can live in the same house. And many students see this as an inconvenience. Obviously, they'd like to live with four friends, not just three. So if there's something that can be done, if this later down the road is an issue that Council would like to look into more, I know there are many students at John Carroll that are eager to see this moved, not anything horribly egregious. I think the number four was the number that was brought up last week. And I think that's something reasonable as well, considering that a lot of the houses around here that are for rent are four-bedroom homes. So it makes sense from both a supplier's point of view and the demander's point of view that we move the ordinance up to allow four unrelated individuals to be within the same home. But otherwise, I have no other issues to bring to Council, and good luck with the remainder of your evening.
I get it. Four chickens, four unrelated residents. I see how it all works. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bishop, and thank you all of you from John Carroll from coming and addressing us this evening. And thank you once again for allowing me to address you at the Student Union last week.
Well, everyone, one more, a couple more chicken talks, and then hopefully we'll be kind of wrapping up. But I'm here in support of the chicken.
What is your name, sir?
Daley Vaughn, and I live on Saybrook Road. So I just wanted to share a little bit about my experience with chickens. So I grew up in Red Oak, Texas, a relatively small town. My next-door neighbors in a suburban environment owned chickens. They had a chicken coop on the side of their shed. My window was adjacent to their chicken coop, like we were kind of on a corner of a house. They did have a rooster, and that was really annoying. But the actual hens themselves, I never have heard a hen in my experience living there, you know, asleep. I was woken up many times by the rooster, but never by the hens themselves. And I think it'd be a great addition to our community. One of the things that I look at is, we heard about all the new vibrant cities that are allowing chickens. I'm not saying that chickens are going to change University Heights to make it the next hotspot to live in, but it does allow for a more progressive sort of, like millennials, a lot of our community is aging. We want to replace those folks as housing becomes available. So I do think that it would be a great addition to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Christopher Russo, who runs Traymore Road.
Yes, could you allow Mr. Russo an opportunity to speak, please? Thank you.
So I guess I'll piggyback off the millennial thing. I bought my house when I was twenty-five years old, but I'm against having chickens in the city. One question I kind of do have out of my own ignorance is, are these going to be, I assume that chickens need some sort of heat in wintertime, because I know we had wind chills of negative twenty this year. So, you know, do we run the risk of having electrical fires? And if they're going to be so close to people's property lines and garages, I'd hate for a neighbor's chicken coop to catch on fire when they're out getting their groceries that wouldn't include eggs. And then it catches my garage on fire. So, I mean, general question, and I don't expect to be answered, but it's just another thought, you know, on top of all the other problems. Do we run the risk of electrical fires from, you know, electric heaters or something like that? I'd encourage you to please reject this ordinance and take the planning commissions advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo.
My name is Amy Feldman. I live at two-five-nine-one Traymore. I was at a fundraiser before I came here tonight and was talking to a judge who lives in Cleveland Heights on a large piece of property. His neighbors had chickens, coyotes came in, ate them. They told me, both his wife and him, that they could hear those chickens clucking. So I am definitely against them.
Thank you, Ms. Feldman.
My name is Lou Basilewski. I live at twenty-one seventy-one South Belvoir, and I oppose having chickens in University Heights. I moved here a year and a half ago from North Carolina. I love the fact that University Heights is a city of beautiful homes. Aesthetic appeal is very important to me. I love University Heights. I've enjoyed living here. I do not like the appearance of chicken coops. I wouldn't want a chicken coop next door to me, nor would I want a house that's painted purple with pink polka dots. So I'm totally opposed to all of this, and I hope that you take the aesthetic appeal into consideration when you make your decision. In addition, I am concerned about all of the issues that everyone else, that spoken opposition brought up. Particularly concerning are what's going to happen with complaints? How is this going to be enforced? I know that the building department is very, very busy, and I can't imagine that they're going to be able to take on all kinds of additional issues of this kind. One last comment that I have is that if this is indeed a fifty-fifty proposition, maybe we ought to put it on the ballot and put it up for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sheila Hubman. My husband and I live on Ashers Road. I'm so glad I had notes so I can remember what I wanted to say. At the building commission meeting, it was maybe referred to as a trial, air, trial or something, I don't know. But I thought Mr. Fink indicated that we're changing law, because I think there was a golf course, but that was not, that property was not turned into housing. So I don't recall. I think probably, I feel that probably our lots are the same as they were in nineteen forty-six. Of course, I don't know that for sure. We didn't move in until sixty-five, so I don't know. And then I, I actually came to talk about the budget that's on the commit, on the agenda tonight. I went to the Finance Commission meeting the other night, and I was so disappointed to see how much we're overspending our revenue. That is not a good idea. I know we have a reserve that we can use now, but what are we going to do when we run out of reserve and people are employed? One example is the mayor now has three days of an assistant, and the new budget, as I understand it, is asking for eight days. That's almost triple. Maybe we could go from three days to five days. There would be some compromise. And the last, my last comment has to do with the people who come up here to talk. When they turn around and talk to the peanut gallery, that's not who they're presenting their arguments to. They're presenting their arguments to the council, and the microphone and cameras are set up for the council. And so that if you don't face the microphone when you give your presentation, the people who are attempting to view this at home on the recording can't hear what's being said because you have your back to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubman. Is there any further public comment? Very good. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. I do have a report. "We will be investing some of the city's surplus into one-time expenditures. We will be increasing services to our residents through some strategic additions to the budget, including the hiring of one additional police officer, one additional firefighter, the creation of an economic development department, and with that, the hiring of an economic development director, and the addition of a combined communications and civic engagement position. These additions will allow this city to better serve you." "We will be having a special meeting of City Council a week from tonight, March twenty-sixth at seven PM, to have a second reading and vote on the budget. We will also be taking up, I believe, the other recommendation of the Finance Committee on second reading at that meeting, being the adjustment of the mayor's spending authority from five thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars. That spending limit has not been adjusted since nineteen eighty-eight. Tomorrow, we will be having a parade committee meeting at six-thirty PM here at City Hall. Last week, we had a meeting of the Communications Committee to discuss improvements in communications with the residents as we explore both the future of the monthly newsletter and explore other forms of outreach to the community. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Sue Parti for chairing that meeting while I was at the planning commission for the hearing on the proposed chicken ordinances. Last week, we began installing the City Hall server. Installation continues. There is wiring to do. There are permissions to grant, access to give. Improving the infrastructure of the city is critical to serving our residents. Last week, I was a guest of the John Carroll University Student Union. I addressed their student representatives and also listened to their concerns. Engaging in regular dialogue will promote our working together and our shared community. I'd like to thank Mr. Bishop and Sam and everyone who's here. I didn't get quite all your names, but I know that Kelly did, so I appreciate that. Thank you for being here tonight. And speaking of regular dialogue and working together, late last year, I let the then Cleveland Heights, University Heights School Board member-elect Jody Serini and Cleveland Heights Councilwoman and now Cleveland Heights Vice Mayor Melissa Yasenow know that on behalf of the City of University Heights, we would be interested in some joint meetings between University Heights, Cleveland Heights, our shared school district, school board, and our shared library systems board. Tentatively, and if there is no objection by Council, the Cleveland Heights, University Heights School Board has now offered to hold a joint meeting with us on April twenty-third, twenty eighteen. The school board has also set aside June twenty-five, twenty eighteen, as another joint meeting, that time with the school board and both the city governments of Cleveland Heights and University Heights. I understand that Cleveland Heights has indicated its willingness to meet on June twenty-five. Finally, we are looking at October twenty-ninth as a third joint meeting date. We are still awaiting a date that might include the library board. Last week, I attended the Heights Hillcrest Regional Dispatch Center Board Meeting. There were two officer vacancies on that board, secretary and vice chair. I was selected by the other members of the board to be the vice chair of the board, and I look forward to serving our greater community in this added capacity. Last week, Councilman John Rock, Community Development Coordinator Patrick Rogan Myers, Law Director Luke McConville, and I had a first organizational meeting with Guide Studios about the rebranding of our city. This first meeting was little more than a meeting to set up and discuss further meetings and to begin gathering up the items that bear the city's present logo and branding. Last week, we also had a nearly full house to hear the presentation and question-and-answer session with Solar United Neighbors and the Cuyahoga County Solar Co-op. If you missed the meeting and you would like to learn more about going solar, you may do so by visiting www.solarunitedneighbors.org/Cuyahoga. Since the last council meeting, I got an official tour of Belfair. I saw firsthand the site of the proposed improvements to the campus. I attended the NOACA Board of Directors meeting and stayed for the NOACA 101 presentation for new board members and officials to learn more about how NOACA helps our region and how we can better use NOACA for transportation improvements here in University Heights. And speaking of transportation in our community, on the agenda tonight is a motion to accept a bid for resurfacing Sillsby Road from Edgerton to Warrensville Center. Earlier this year, we secured county approval for reimbursement of material costs of up to thirty-six thousand dollars, as Sillsby is technically a county road. Working with our city engineer, this project is scheduled to be started and completed before the Memorial Day Parade. All bidders were advised that completion before Memorial Day was a firm requirement of this job. There are other resurfacing jobs that we plan for twenty eighteen, but we took this one separately and firstly, in order to get it completed forthwith and before the parade. Finally, I wish to offer my support for the now amended proposed chicken ordinances that are on the agenda tonight. At the planning commission last week, I abstained from the vote on the recommendation because I believed the proposed ordinances could be amended to the point of acceptability for our city to try urban chickens as a pilot program, prudently and closely monitored for the many concerns that have been raised by concerned residents, some of them here tonight. I have heard from many concerned residents, pro and con, and I think that these proposed ordinances, as amended, well-balance these concerns to protect our neighbors from nuisance while allowing some neighbors to engage in keeping in chickens in a regulated and responsible way. However the vote ultimately turns out, I want to thank Councilman Mark Wiseman and the Building Committee for their thoughtful, forward-looking, and dedicated efforts on this matter. And this concludes my report. Thank you. We now turn to the regular agenda. The first item is the Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council from their March twelve, twenty eighteen, meeting to approve Belfair JCB two-two-zero-zero-one Fairmount Boulevard building a new cottage for an expanded child and youth mental health unit. You may proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's Robert Braun. I'm the Director of Facilities Operations for Belfair JCB. We're here tonight again to go through our request to build a cottage, adolescent and youth behavioral health unit on the footprint of an existing cottage that has already been approved to be torn down. In the respect for everybody's time, we'll keep it very brief. I've asked Dave Pustey, Makavich Pustey, to present a couple of showboards, and then I've brought additional staff with me that can answer any programming question, items like that, should those come up. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. You were here in December. You present the project, and this is the second phase of it. The first phase was the demolition.
I know you're the architect, but could you state your name for the record, just for the minutes?
Dave Pustey, Makavich Pustey.
Thank you, Mr. Pustey. I do, but just for the minutes.
So we're going to give you a very brief overview. We had approval to demolish the cottage in order to take down the existing building. We had to move some of the services in that building to other buildings. We received approval for that last, this past week. We went to Planning Commission for the construction of the new cottage and received their recommendation for approval. So I'm going to give you a fast overview. Where the red dot is is the location of the cottage that's coming down and the location of the new building. This is the existing site. That's the existing building there. This is the proposed new cottage, which is going to be basically one floor with second floor offices, and in the basement, there's going to be a laundry facility for the cottage. We'll be doing the site work to re-accommodate parking. We are building less parking than they currently have.
You're building less? Did I hear you?
Yeah, we're dropping two spaces, two parking spaces.
Okay.
First floor plan, this building is very program-driven. The first floor is basically the residence rooms, and then there's activity areas, central control point for visual control, and then there's the staff spaces and offices, staff entrance, primary entrance. And the second floor is basically shell space for future offices, and the basement is laundry. And I wanted to point out, the building we're taking down is a number of very interesting masonry details, and we're trying to pick up as many of them as we can in the new building because the whole
You know, one day, we'll have a TV in here, so you don't have to bring all those boards and easels. I know what a pain that is. I attended the Planning Commission meeting the last time, so I was able to see this presentation. There's a number of trees you're taking down, and you plan on replanting trees. Were you able to get a number of trees that you're taking down versus the number of trees you're replanting?
Taking down about 20 trees. Many of them are dead elm trees, so we're clearing those out. And on the site plan, basically, we're taking down some existing trees in this area, and we're replacing them with a line of trees to again screen the property. We have a very long separation to the side of the yard. The campus is very large. It's over 25 acres, and our setback on that side is 216 feet, so we're a long ways away from the residences. But we're replanting it with some deciduous trees and some evergreens to shield the traffic and the parking and the driveway.
That's very good, because the campus has beautiful trees, so the fact that you're planting them, I'm glad that you're doing that.
This site came about because there's a heavily wooded area here, and the president of the organization said, "Don't touch it."
Right, right. Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Cameron.
Thank you. Could you show me on the rendering of the building itself? Can you show me what details you've included from the old?
Yes, that actually is best, this one here.
Oh.
We're matching pretty closely the brick. There's a water table that we're going to reintroduce into this building, which is basically a small projected shelf of masonry. They've got soldier courses over the windows, and we're picking that up. Many of the other buildings in the campus have this as a continuous band, so we're going to do that. There's arched brick arches, and we're picking those up. And then finally, there are stone accents that we're going to add to our building, which are on the existing buildings.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pusti, for coming in. I was at the Planning Commission meeting where we first approved the building to come down. What was there in the building that came down?
It was originally a dormitory building, and it's been closed since the '90s, and the nature of the clientele is such that once four fully supervised areas, much more expedient for the current use of the building. The other building could not be bought up to code. Buildings like this now have to be sprinkled, fire alarm systems, the exiting, the construction of the building, energy conservation. That building was just too far out of compliance to try to bring back.
Was it vacant since the '90s?
It's been used for maintenance shop and for kitchen storage.
And now you're replacing it with the dormitory, obviously?
On that site, and the kitchen storage is moved to another building, and the maintenance shop is moved in addition to the garage, which was approved in December.
And those two moves are permanent? The kitchens and the maintenance?
Yeah, they're permanent.
Okay. And how many residents will this hold?
It will hold 12, two wings of six each.
Okay, and how many staff?
Approximately 25 total. Three chefs, seven days a week. So it's about 25 full-time employees all together.
Okay, and these are new, going to be new employees for Belfair?
A mix of new employees and some employees made larger transfers.
What I'm getting at is that these residents are coming from existing residents at Belfair or new arrivals?
New arrivals.
12, okay. I'm sorry, for the record, your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Jeffrey Lox. I'm Belfair's executive director.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it, thank you. I always say this when Belfair comes here, I think it's a tribute to Belfair that most of the residents don't hear or see it most of the time because Belfair does it. Not only is it very important what you do, but you're very good at policing the area and helping maintain the former residents and everything, and I think it's a, I'm glad to see that the new building is going to match the other buildings on campus because the campus, it's beautiful if you've been back there. If you haven't been back there, it's still beautiful, but thank you, thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any questions? Is there anything you'd care to add in conclusion? Okay, very good, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation from their March 12 meeting to approve Belfair JCB at 22001 Fairmount Boulevard to build new cottages for an expanded child and youth mental health unit.
Very good. There's a motion, there's a second motion by Mr. Rock, second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Thomas, we take the roll, please.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, sir, and thank you too for presenting today and going through this process. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Ordinance 2018-18, Restoring the Interim Police Chief to the Civil Service Rank of Sergeant. This is being presented on emergency. This is being introduced by council as a whole, but basically, by way of overview, this proposed ordinance acknowledges that the appointment of Dustin Rogers as police chief on an interim basis, that Dustin Rogers held the rank of sergeant at our police department prior to his appointment as interim chief of our police department, basically without reading it word for word here. The proposed ordinance would allow Dustin Rogers to return to the rank of sergeant, fully restored to that position and as a member of the bargaining unit and so on, should he not continue on in a full-time capacity as our police chief ultimately. We have done this similarly for interim chief Perko, and we've had a history previously in our city of allowing this as a protection for the individuals who step up to serve in interim capacity so that they are not risking their long-term career prospects should they not ultimately either...
Prevail.
Well, prevail, or should they decline to seek the ultimate, the position ultimately? So, that said, if there's any discussion or questions about this motion or this ordinance, otherwise we can entertain a motion. Mrs. Cameron.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, um, is that what I wanted to say? I've moved that we adopt the Ordinance 2018-18, Restoring Interim Police Chief to the Civil Service Rank of Sergeant, and doing so on emergency.
Okay, there is a motion, and it's also made on emergency, and that motion's by Mrs. Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wiseman. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, Ms. Thomas, we take the roll, please.
Mr. Rock?
On suspension.
Oh, yes, excuse me. First on suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Okay, and then on the main motion.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next is the Approval Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin Rogers and the City of University Heights. The next item in the council packet, it's referenced also in the ordinance, but essentially, it provides the terms and would authorize the mayor to go ahead and enter this MOU with Dustin Rogers, again, restoring him, consistent with the ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, we would entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin Rogers and the City of University Heights, denoted as Item C on the agenda.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, so motion by Mr. Wiseman, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Thomas, we call the roll first. Oh, I'm sorry, does this have to be on emergency? It does not, okay, all right. Ms. Thomas, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next is the Approval Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin Rogers and the City of University Heights. The next item in the council packet, it's referenced also in the ordinance, but essentially, it provides the terms and would authorize the mayor to go ahead and enter this MOU with Dustin Rogers, again, restoring him, consistent with the ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, we would entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin Rogers and the City of University Heights, denoted as Item C on the agenda.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, so motion by Mr. Wiseman, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Thomas, we call the roll first. Oh, I'm sorry, does this have to be on emergency? It does not, okay, all right. Ms. Thomas, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next is the Approval Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin Rogers and the City of University Heights. The next item in the council packet, it's referenced also in the ordinance, but essentially, it provides the terms and would authorize the mayor to go ahead and enter this MOU with Dustin Rogers, again, restoring him, consistent with the ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, we would entertain a motion. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin
Rogers and the City of University Heights, denoted as Item C on the agenda.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, so motion by Mr. Wiseman, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Thomas, we call the roll first. Oh, I'm sorry, does this have to be on emergency? It does not, okay, all right. Ms. Thomas, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next is the Approval Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin Rogers and the City of University Heights. The next item in the council packet, it's referenced also in the ordinance, but essentially, it provides the terms and would authorize the mayor to go ahead and enter this MOU with Dustin Rogers, again, restoring him, consistent with the ordinance. If there are no questions or comments, we would entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have moved to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Dustin Rogers and the City of University Heights, denoted as Item C on the agenda.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, so motion by Mr. Wiseman, second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion on this motion? Ms. Thomas, we call the roll first. Oh, I'm sorry, does this have to be on emergency? It does not, okay, all right. Ms. Thomas, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Earl?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda. Item E, Planning Commission's Recommendation to City Council from their March 12, 2018 meeting not to approve Ordinance 2018-14, Amending Codified Ordinance Section 1250.02 of the Planning and Zoning Code entitled "Permitted Uses" to permit chicken coops in a U1 district upon the issuance of a special-use permit. This is on second reading and would or could be on emergency. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, first of all, to all the residents who have come out tonight. I am heartened by the response that our community has received and your willingness to come out to City Council for my money. I'd like it if the council chambers were filled to the brim every time we had a meeting, although I might wish that your opinions were a little bit different, but that being said, you know, we don't, we don't always agree on anything. I'd like to give a few minutes about the history of this ordinance. A resident approached us, I think at least a year ago, maybe longer, about the idea of having a backyard chicken coop. And somebody asked tonight, like, "Why would you want this?" You know, and it's certainly a valid question for yourself, but I don't think I can ask someone else, "Why do you want this or this particular change?" And I view our job on City Council as to help the city grow in as many ways as we can that do not infringe on other people's rights and don't cause such a blow-up. So we have looked at this for a long time. This may be our 10th meeting on the matter, I'm not exactly sure. I know this young woman and her husband have come here at least to four council meetings. We've had a number of building committee meetings. This is not something that I or any of my colleagues have taken lightly. We have all studied this. We have gotten a lot of information. It's not something that we just threw together, despite my answer about population density. We have tweaked this ordinance. We have added more fetters than I've seen to any ordinance since I've been on council. The finished product is a pilot program that will be looked at with another public hearing, which I'm sure will be well-attended in February of 2019. As proposed, and it hasn't passed yet, I hope it does, but as proposed, there are no roosters allowed, you can't sell your eggs, you can't sell the chickens, you can't eat the chickens. You have to have a coop that is approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is a group of architects and/or lawyers who look at the, who look at the words behind the ordinance and determine whether or not it's the right size and whether it fits in the yard that is proposed. We're also limiting it to 25 people. I don't know that we'll get 25, but that number, if that's the number of people who want to have a chicken coop, is less than one-half of 1% of all the houses in University Heights. So the idea that your house might be surrounded by chicken coops, I think, is a little bit of a worry that might be unnecessary.
But it's possible.
So you guys have had your chance to address us on council. Now I ask you that you afford us the same opportunity. I understand that people are afraid. I understand that something new, as new as this, and something worrisome about whether or not your house is going to burn down, you're going to die from salmonella poisoning, the smell of chicken waste is going to be so terrible that you can't stand your backyard. I don't think that's going to be the case. Almost every city around us allows backyard chicken coops. We have heard zero cases of anybody getting ill from a backyard chicken coop in Idaho County. I talked to the Health Department. The man in charge of this said he's received four complaints in a dozen years. That's one complaint every three years. I talked to the building manager at South U, zero complaints for the chicken coops that they allow. But we're not just saying you can have chicken coops, and we're not saying you can have a chicken farm. I understand the people who grew up on a farm. I grew up in West Virginia. I know what farms smell like. This isn't going to be that. We're not allowing goats, we're not allowing cows. We're allowing up to four chickens that are penned in for almost the entire day. And we're going to review it in February of 2019. If there's a slew of complaints, if everybody has a problem, if they're as smelly and as horrible as we think they are, by the end of 2019, there won't be any more chicken coops in the city. And other than just saying no as a knee-jerk reaction, I think this is really our best opportunity to see if something like this works. Somebody said that he's not allowed to rearrange his house because it takes up so much space and land. I'm guessing that he hasn't asked the city because we grant variances all the time for someone who wants to build on their backyard. Somebody said, "If I'm eating in my backyard, because it's 10 feet from the fence, it's 10 feet from me." Well, unless you're eating up against the fence line, the chicken coop's more than
Mr. Rock?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for all the audience members who are here today and sitting for two hours. I know those chairs are extremely uncomfortable, I've sat many hours in those chairs and...
These chairs aren't great either.
These are not great either. They look different, but they're not that great. So we have spent a lot of time on this ordinance, and in the beginning, I thought, you know, when I heard there was an application, I said, what is this about? This is interesting. But as I looked further into it, we are surrounded by cities of Shaker Heights, Cleveland Heights, South Euclid, and Beechwood. Those are our neighbors, and it just so happens that every single one of those neighbors allowed chicken coops in the yard. Albeit that some had different rules and distances, et cetera, it's acceptable. We looked at some of our neighboring cities to see how they handled their ordinances, to see how we can, as a good neighbor, handle our ordinances. I hope through some of these adjustments that we were, I don't know if they were introduced or not, but some of the adjustments that we wanted to make to this ordinance, such as only granting X amount of permits, and the number is 25 in the city, so that 26 households cannot do this, that's something that we understand, you can only have 25. That helped me make a decision after the planning commission meeting. So for somebody who do not know, I am an architect, I have studied zoning codes, I've spent six years in architecture school, and part of that is studying codes, zoning, planning commission recommendations, that sort of thing. And you have to ask yourself, why do some of these codes exist? Codes exist because they're a good thing. That means a bank can't build their building next to my house on Fenwick. I'm glad that zoning code exists. They exist so that it preserves the home value of your property and neighboring properties. However, there are rules and zoning codes that are dated, there are codes that, I hate to say it, are somewhat discriminatory. They're called exclusionary ordinances or exclusionary zoning. I'm not saying our city has that, but many cities do. In codes that were written in the '30s and '40s and '50s, this was prevalent, to prevent certain undesirable people from living in your community. There were codes, up until civil rights, that rejected certain demographics from living in your community, and they used the code to get their way by saying you have to have numbers of square feet, you have to have this, basically, your house has to be expensive to live here, to build here. Just a few months ago, we reviewed a resident who asked for an appeal to the Board of Zoning Decision, who would not allow them to have a commercial vehicle in their driveway. Now, this resident lives in the city, works, has a commercial vehicle, but our code says you cannot have a commercial vehicle in your city. That is a very old code. Most likely, that was written to prevent blue collar workers from living in our city, and I hate to say that, but those are the types of exclusionary codes that are written, and the cities have a chance to make those changes. We happen to have a consultant who will be looking at our zoning codes comprehensively, we started that process years ago, went on hiatus, but we want to bring that back as a council, to look at these things, to see what in our codes that were written 70 years ago just do not work for today's households. I'm sure this would be proud of in conversation, because, again, all of our neighbors have amended these ordinances at some point. So I just wanted to give you a little history of that, and as to, you know, I have gotten a lot of calls, a lot of calls, a lot of emails, probably more about this subject than I've ever had on council, and that's good, that's a very good thing, and I would say probably 50/50, 45/55, somewhere in that realm. In fact, a lot of people I did speak with when I said, look, we are going to amend this so that it has to go for annual renewals, and neighbors have their chance to speak up during this renewal process, and we have to have training, a lot of people said, okay, this makes sense, I'm glad you're making some adjustments, I'm glad you're not allowing roosters. So we've heard these complaints, and a lot of these complaints during planning commission, we made changes after the planning commission recommendation, because we heard what people had to say, and we understood, these changes need to get into our codes. So where do we go from here? Now, I know that perhaps the Francis family will take very good care of their chickens. I would hope that you are going to put food in your body, and food that comes from an animal that you are taking care of, and I hope that you are cleaning the coop, because that is going to be food that you ingest. I would hope this, right? I mean, I personally, when I ingest food, I wash it, I make sure it's clean, but I have no control over where the food comes from. And I have, you know, I see where people who want to be food independent, grow their own food, I appreciate that, because you don't know what's going in your food. And going back to the code where I was talking about exclusionary zoning, why was this written 70 years ago? Was this to keep out certain undesirables from living in our community? I don't know who they were. Were they immigrant families, perhaps, who had chickens? And now we're saying, you know, at that time, we don't want you in our community. Now is our chance to make right on some of these things. These are not the same families from 70 years ago that want chickens, these are a new generation of Americans who want something to be food independent, and that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Rock.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Sims.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to definitely commend my colleagues for the work that they have put into this, and they definitely have put more meeting time and work in it than I have. I've seen them attempt to be responsive to the concerns that have been raised on issues such as the number of chickens, the setback, the overall number of chickens in the city, I mean, the training, all of these things were introduced after the original ordinance was introduced, and so I appreciate what they have done to try to be responsive to the community. And personally, I don't think a million people will come forth and want to have a chicken coop, but I think I may be in the minority on this issue, because I think one may be more than we need, one may be too many. So besides the personal research that I have done on this issue, and it covers all the issues that have already been discussed, I understand the pros and I understand the cons, and I just happen to believe that the cons definitely outweigh the pros. I've talked to friends and family in North Carolina and South Carolina and in Georgia, and in my mind, there's no question that chickens are smelly and that they are dirty. The noise is not necessarily the nuisance that we think it might be, but noise is definitely a factor. They do attract rats and raccoons and skunks and coyotes and other predators, without question. We have also talked about branding University Heights and, you know, what that brand is. And of course, that's going to be different for different people, and that's the reason that we will have a process around determining what that is. But presently, I don't think University Heights is a farming community. I don't think backyard animals are appropriate in this community, and I don't think that anyone who is looking to move here now, maybe if we rebrand ourselves in this way, is looking to move here because they can have farm animals in the backyard. And so we are a city in transition, and I'm not sure where we're going, but I don't think that this is the place that we should be headed at this point. I would also add that my home was built in 1936, and University Heights was definitely a different community at that time. To Mrs. Hubbard's point, I don't think that it was a farming community, but it definitely resulted from a farm. University Heights, especially west of Warrensville Center, was a dairy farm. And it was a dairy farm, and whoever acquired it turned it into a planned community. So we knew that we would have small lots, and we knew that families would be in close proximity to each other. So what I would say about that is that we do not compare to other communities that we keep comparing ourselves to. We're not Shaker, we're not Beechwood, we're not Cleveland Heights, we're not South Euclid, we're not Lakewood, and we're not the City of Cleveland. Nor do I want to be, nor do I think we should be. I think that we should be trying to differentiate ourselves from other communities so that we can have a true brand for this community, as opposed to trying to make ourselves similar to other communities. And so when I hear someone say that these communities are just like University Heights, they are not. They're not just like University Heights. The housing density, as was discussed, and the size of the lots are much different between all the different communities, and I just believe that we are a smallly carved-out community as far as how close the homes are to each other, that the legislation, even though it has been modified to be more responsive, even the setbacks and all of those things were changed, I don't think that that legislation is definitely on course or on target for what we need in this community. I would also add that I think that Mrs. Francis will be a very good person who would upkeep her animals in a way that would be consistent with what we would hope. But I'm not convinced that everyone would be. I'm just not convinced of that, and I think that there's a very good chance that other homeowners or chicken coop keepers would not hold themselves to the same standard that Mrs. Francis might. I also appreciate her for her interest in doing something that she believes is important, something that she believes would enhance this community. I don't see it as an enhancement personally, but I appreciate her point of view, and I don't disregard it, I don't discount it, and I thank you for bringing it forward to the rest of us for consideration. But at this point, for me, it is a single individual who's looking to rewrite the legislation for the city, and based on what I've seen tonight, just tonight, and the calls that I've gotten, there seems to be an overwhelming opposition to the ordinance change, and that would include the planning commission, even though if my esteemed colleague would have been there, it would have been a recommendation to approve, and we would be at the same place, but my opinion wouldn't be any different.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Erdel.
I think this has been a great example of the democratic process, this has been a great discussion, and you're lucky that I'm a man of few words, this isn't going to go on for another 20 minutes, but I would like to say that I am not in favor of this. Simply, this law allows a chicken coop to be within 10 feet of a neighbor's property and store chicken poop within five feet? I feel this is intrusive and a health and safety concern. Okay? If this law has to go into effect, I suggest we make a couple of additional modifications. A neighbor lodging a BZA hearing objection cannot prevent chickens, but requiring a neighbor's written approval would. And for renewal of a BZA special permit for chicken, there's an inspection by the building department that's required, and I would like to see the building inspector attend one of these educational courses also. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Erdel. Are there any further comments up here on council? Are there any motions?
Before there are any motions, I want to address a couple of procedural issues for council. One is that emergency clauses were added to these ordinances but did not appear on the agenda, so if you want to consider the ordinances on emergency, you'll have to make a motion to amend the agenda for consideration of the ordinances on emergency. The second is that, as you might be aware, the passage on emergency will require 2/3 of all council members in order to be passed on emergency. That means five votes will be necessary for passage on emergency. And finally, our code has a provision that indicates that in order for an ordinance to pass in opposition to or in differentiation from a planning commission recommendation, that ordinance also requires a 2/3 approval or five votes.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Is there a motion?
I just have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Probably for the law director.
Okay.
So can this be tabled and then put on second reading, so it's not on emergency? So everything is in here, and we have time to review everything at the next meeting?
You can table.
What Mr. McConville said is that this may be tabled.
So I'd like to make a motion to table this for the next council meeting, so council has a chance to review all of the additional narrative that was not included on this agenda.
Okay, just for point of clarification, we have a special meeting next week, then a regular meeting first Monday of April. Would you be tabling it to the next, to the special meeting or to the regular meeting?
The regular meeting.
To the regular meeting, okay. So we have a motion to table this to the first regular meeting of April by Mrs. Weiss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any discussion on the motion to table?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Wiseman, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just for the edification, the people here are probably wondering, why did I stand here and tell you what I thought for the last two hours? The vice mayor's not here, she is clearly for it, we've discussed it, I know she was for it. With that, since Councilman Sims and Councilman Erdel have expressed their desire to vote it down, only four people voting for it, because the planning commission voted not to recommend, it would fail, and it wouldn't pass on emergency anyway, so we're tabling it to the next council meeting, at which time Vice Mayor Part D, I anticipate, will vote yes, we'll have the five votes, and then it will pass. I'm assuming four of my colleagues are in favor of it. So please feel free to show up at the next council meeting again and tell us what you think, if you'd like, but that's my understanding of the situation, is that fairly accurate?
I believe that is accurate, and that does afford us additional opportunity to consider further amendments, if there is something that would be, that somebody feels doesn't balance the competing interests of all the neighbors here and in the community. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll. I understand a yes vote would be to table the motion, or table this to the next regular meeting in April. Okay.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
No.
Mr. Erdel?
No.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
All right, motion is, this is tabled.
You'll need a motion on the next ordinance as well.
Okay, yes, the next item is the, item F is the companion ordinance for chickens with section 618.25 modified, the other sections all in section 618. Is there a motion to table this one as well?
Sub moved.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Wiseman to table that ordinance, and there's a second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion? If there is none, then again, a yes vote would table to the next regular council meeting in April, this agenda item.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Nay.
Mr. Erdel?
No.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the... Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2018-16, amending codified ordinance section 212.01 entitled advertising requirements and bids, and ordinance 212.03 entitled execution and approval for the purpose of increasing the mayor's spending authority to $15,000. This is on first reading, and I believe our sponsor is someone from finance committee. Let's see.
Yes, Mayor. Since the vice mayor, who is chairperson of the finance committee, cannot be here today, I was acting as a substitute at the meeting.
Okay, very good. Mr. Rock, if you would proceed.
I was the alternate chair, or alternate committee member, so I could fill you in on that meeting. We discussed increasing the mayor's spending authority from $5,000 to $15,000. Again, the last time it was increased was back in 1988.
Eighty-eight, 30 years ago.
It's in line with neighboring communities, actually, it's less than neighboring communities still, but again, we want to cap it at $15,000 and not a dollar more because anything over $15,000 for bidding purposes still has to go out to bid, and we want to have some type of control over that. So, anything under $15,000 does not necessarily have to go to public bid, and to not hold up our government here, we feel that is prudent to make this a necessary adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Weisman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those who are still here, I would trust this mayor with my checkbook, but he's not using my checkbook, he's using your checkbook, and I'm more than happy to adjust the spending authority up to $15,000, but more than that I would have an objection to. I think $15,000 is a good compromise. I didn't think it needed to be raised, but I'm not going to stand in the way. I think in a city like this, it's very important for the council to continue to have fetters on the mayor and the spending that is done. I will say that it has not been very long into this new administration, and this mayor is already way more transparent than we used to, and already way more forthcoming with the bills that are being written and how the money is being spent and how the city's being governed. So, that being said, that makes it easy for me to vote in favor of an ordinance like this, increasing his spending authority. I have no doubt that council's still going to be able to get the information that we need and the understanding that we have about where our money is being spent and what's being purchased from this administration. But I would caution against raising it any higher because we are not just adjusting the spending authority for this mayor, we're adjusting it for every other mayor that we're going to see. May this one live long and prosper, but we don't know when there's going to be another mayor. The last spending authority was, I think, in 1988. That's been, I think, 30 years by my count, so it's going to be a while. I'm happy moving it up to 15 grand, but anything more than that, I think I probably would have a problem with. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, well, this matter is on first reading. I believe it was the intention of finance committee to bring it back for the special meeting along with the budget, since they were both finance committee recommendations. So, seeing the nods, we will have our second meeting, reading at the special meeting next week, that being a week from tonight. Very good. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2018-17, the city budget for 2018. This is on first reading. The chair of the finance committee absent, Mr. Rock, would you care to speak on this?
Sure. So, we went through a lengthy budgeting process, probably longer than any other year. We have a new administration. Our prior administration chose not to have a budget on December 31st so that the incoming administration can set their goals and agendas and priorities, and that the budget would reflect that. I thought that was very fair. We went through a lengthy process where we met with multiple department heads, all the department heads, actually. We've met with, sorry about the echo. They're never going to fix it. But we met with all the department heads to find out what their goals for the department are, and it doesn't align with the mayor's, and how we can budget accordingly. We had $3 million sitting at the line item at the very end of the day. So, you pay the city if you did nothing with it. We also have a rainy day fund, about seven and a half million.
Yes.
So-
It's not technically a rainy day fund, it hasn't been designated that, but there is 7.5 million invested.
In reserves.
Yes.
At the end of the year, there will be a positive balance of over a million dollars, as we're projecting. I hope we move forward with that. As the mayor said in his communications earlier in the meeting, that it does include additional personnel. Again, we're trying to grow the city. We understand to grow the city, you have to invest in your city. Your money's doing no good sitting in someone else's checkbook, so here's our chance to invest it. So, we've, like, again, met multiple times to find out how we can invest this for the growth of our city.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you. I also just want to elaborate on Councilman Rock's comments. So, this was actually a pretty exhaustive budget process, which was a healthy budget process for the city because they have not gone through that in quite some time. We did hear a wish list, as Councilman Rock said, from each department, and the great part about this was that the finance committee and council together collaborated and compromised, and it was all done in a very respectful and healthy manner. And everybody has respected what the outcomes are. And again, we do still have a surplus. We are not negative, and our investments are healthy, and the city is financially strong.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Sheehan, since you're the finance director, would you care to address this matter?
Yes, Mayor. I received word today that we may need to amend this budget resolution. Apparently, the service department gets a boot allowance and a tool allowance, and those additional items total $19,800. Those aren't, that's not in the budget, so I think we should put it in the budget. So, I'd like to amend it this week and pass it on final resolution at the special meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Are there any further comments? If there are none, then we will put on the city budget for 2018 at the special meeting, which will be this coming Monday, July 26th, excuse me, March 26th, at 7:00 PM here in city council chambers. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to accept the bid of C.A. Agresta Construction Company for the Sillsby Road resurfacing Edgerton to Warrensville Center Road project as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $346,363 and enter into contract. Mr. Chuni, who has recommended this, is out of the country, but Mr. Pecorni is here to address us on this matter, so thank you, Mr. Pecorni. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Sillsby Road resurfacing project, which will resurface and replace curbs on Sillsby from Eaton, East-
Eaton, Edgerton.
Or Edgerton, east to Warrensville Center. There were six bids opened on March 9th, 2018, and of the six bids, C.A. Agresta was the lowest and considered the best bid at $346,363, and we're recommending that we award the contract to them and get them started so that we can have the road paved before Memorial Day.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Pecorni?
Yes, Mayor. My first question is, have we, has this company done work in our city before?
They have before. In general, most of the time, they're the concrete contractor. In this case, they're bidding on the asphalt project, which is both concrete and asphalt.
Okay, I mean, recently or some time ago?
No, they've been, they've had contracts through the years. I think the last contract they had was doing concrete work about three years ago.
Okay. Very good. My second question would be with respect to our entire resurfacing program. We have been very diligent at resurfacing streets, but my impression is that a lot of the streets that have been resurfaced recently are falling back into disrepair. So, do we have any process for trying to evaluate the work that is done and how long it lasts or anything of that nature at all?
I am going to refer that back to our city engineer, Joe Chuni, when he returns. We do have a requirement in the spec that they crack seal the road the following year. We do inspect that crack sealing. However, as you indicate, as the road ages, it will start cracking again. I don't know what type of evaluation he may or may not have done to evaluate that.
And then, two more questions, Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Speaking of the crack sealing, I noticed that it would appear that other communities do it to a much larger extent than we do, and I don't know if they use their own service department to do it, or whether they contract to have it done, but what that does is it does preserve it for a longer period of time. So, what do we do?
We do not crack seal, other than the following year after a pavement project. Most of the other cities, as you referred to, do contract for that service, just like contracting for paving.
Have we ever contracted to your knowledge?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, my-
No, go ahead, please.
And that goes back quite a few years. There probably was a kind of crack sealing program if you look back 25 to 30 years ago.
Great, okay.
There was also chip and seal programs back in those days.
Okay, I don't know the difference between the two, but I just know that we probably could give a little bit more attention to making sure that these investments that we make last as long as they possibly can. And the reason that I was concerned about, or questioned whether this company had done work in University Heights previously and certainly recently is because I wanted to have some sense of what the quality of their work is. So, my final question is, we instituted certain guidelines with respect to what companies have to do to talk about their participation with women and minority-owned businesses. I'm presuming that information was shared with all of the bidders?
It was in the contract, bid documents, yes.
Okay, and what is the, what is the requirement of the company upon the submission of the bid regarding that particular item?
And I can't answer that for you because I don't have the bid documents in front of me. Possibly the clerk of council could respond to that, possibly. Minority bid requirements.
Joe handles that.
Okay, well, what I would just ask is that you come back with the information so that we can begin to familiarize ourselves with it more, and so that staff and the administration can familiarize itself with it more, so we don't have a situation where the chair of the services and utilities committee can't completely recall what it is, the director of service doesn't know what it is, and the clerk of council doesn't. And I understand that perhaps our city engineer does, but it's a matter that I think that everybody should be familiar with so that we can make sure that it is actually being executed in the manner that we intended.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Weisman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. I would like to echo my colleague's comment about the condition of roads that we have finished paving. I would like to see some kind of report that does a look back, I don't know, five years or 10 years, and tells us who did the repairs and what shape the roads are in, just so we can sort of keep our eye on things in the future in terms of. I know Mr. Chuni had put together a list of all the roads and rated them and told us what needed to be and what done, what didn't need to be done. I don't know where this part of Sillsby ranks on that list. This seems like a lot to me. We've been doing about a million or so dollars for the past couple of years. That was for 11 or 12 streets. This is one street from Edgerton to Warrensville, and it's a third of what we used to spend on all those, it's a third of what we spent last year on the roads. I'm just wondering why this is, it seems a little high to me, this.
Because it includes the curbs.
And is it because the curbs now will be ruined once they take it out there, resurface, and they have to do the curbs, or can they keep the old curbs, or they have to do the old, the curbs?
It is the last section of Sillsby from one side of town east to west that does not have curbs, or the curbs are sunken and low.
Completely, completely new curbs, correct?
Yeah, we replaced the curbs on the other parts of Sillsby that have already been done.
And is this, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Is this part of our 2018 road program or separate from that program? Usually, what happened, usually is around this time, you would get one sheet that shows all the streets, and we bid all the streets, now this is separate. I'm just seeing where this ranks in terms of that particular road program.
It is separate. However, the money's coming out of the same budget line item as the streets program, and it was done that way because we were asking for money from the county. We received a commitment of $36,000, I believe, from the county-
Yes.
-to help pay for materials, and with that, we proceeded with the project as we wanted to get it done before Memorial Day.
So, the county's paying us 10% of this, roughly?
Correct.
A little more than 10%. And I don't have any paperwork on this, the bids. Usually, we get the bids in a summary, the bids.
Is this right?
So, you're telling us why we don't have it, but we still don't have the documents, right? I'd like to at least look at something, and it's hard for me to vote on a bid. I don't see the other bids. Usually, Mr. Pecorni do a real good job of showing us the other bids, how much they were, at least we can compare them.
I'm going to need glasses, Mr. Weisman.
At least like to have that. Well, I have glasses. Are these good enough, do you think, or?
That's the damnulation.
Yes, I am.
Oh, cool.
I'm going to need glasses. Is there no, was there no summary sheet the way you used to do it, or? Usually, we get a summary sheet, Mr. Pecorni, where you show the-
There's a cover memo of a couple of bidders.
Mr. Weisman?
I am.
Would you like this?
Thank you, Mrs. Hupman. I certainly could use that. Well, at least if we could have this, I don't want to hold this up, but at least if we could have this after the meeting if the clerk of council couldn't take pains to forward that to all of us.
I'm good.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weisman.
Thank you, Mrs. Hupman.
Yes, indeed. Does anybody have any further comments on this agenda item? Thank you. You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Rock, please, please proceed.
With regard to the curbs, the rest of the street had the curb replacement in the past, correct? This is the remaining portion of the street that has not gotten the curb replacement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. If there's nothing further, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the bid by Mr. Eardle and a second by Mrs. Cameron. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you please take the role?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Eardle?
Aye.
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and real estate matters. There is a real estate matter that we should discuss, so I would ask that we have a motion for executive session for that. I don't know if there's anything besides the real estate matter that we would need to discuss and identify.
No, Mayor.
Okay.
I have an employment matter.
You have an employment matter as well that you'd want to bring up? Okay, so we have a real estate-
I would move-
And an employment matter. And, okay, so we have a motion for executive session for both a real estate and an employment matter. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Eardle. Motion by Mr. Weisman. Ms. Kelly, we, excuse me, Ms. Thomas, will you please take the role?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Sims?
Aye.
Mr. Eardle?
Aye.
Ms. Yaman?
Aye.
Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. We'll move to director's reports. Finance, Mr. Sheehan.
Yes, we, we have kind of, we're getting through the process of installing a new server for the city campus. The next thing we have to do is we have to come up with wiring for the phones and ultimately for the server. I am in the process of- I am in the process of collecting bids for that or quotes. It looks like it's going to be more than $15,000, so we'll probably have to go out to bid to get this wiring done. It consists of fiber wiring from pole to pole, and then within the building, there's a designation for a special wiring called CAT 5E, and we have to install CAT 5E within the building so that we can connect the servers or the individual computers as well as the phones. So I'll be coming back with that shortly. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. Go ahead, Mr. Rock.
Mr. Sheen, we got your email regarding Macy's. It's my understanding that the adjustment to the Macy's property tax collection will not impact the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
So although they will be paying less than property tax, we will not be impacted by a dollar, correct?
That's the way I understand it.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I may elaborate on that, I would say that the adjustment to the Macy's property tax doesn't affect the city's budget. Now, I wouldn't say that there is no effect at all on the city because I happen to think it was wrong. I don't believe that the correct decision was rendered there. We weren't a party to that action, but there is commercial property across the street in South Euclid that has gone up in value, and I don't believe it was appropriate for the Macy's to be compared to a Macy's in Clark County in a depressed area as opposed to the commercial properties that are right here in this vicinity and share this retail market. So I would be... I would not let it pass without saying that it has no effect at all on our city, but it has a neutral effect on our budget. Any of those tax dollars that would have been coming into our budget, it was simply a pass-through to the bondholders. So the check that we write is the check for the amount that comes in. If nothing comes in right now, then there's no check that's written. We're not obligated to write a check just because no money comes in. Quite the opposite.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Cameron.
Yes, I'd like to know from Mr. Sheen if we need to make an amendment for the $19,000 for tools for that department, if we need to do that now prior to us having the second meeting.
We don't have to do that now, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the point of the servers and the phone system, I'd just like to point out, for those who are not particularly pleased with the amount of spending in this year's budget, that our ordinance for backyard animals is not the only thing stuck in the 40s. We had to get a new server for the city. We've got to get new phone systems. There's plenty of things we've done without for the past eight years. It's very important that we update them and update the city, and I think it's unfortunate, but it bears repeating because this has a direct impact on our budget. I don't think that it would have been prudent for us to continue without a phone system that can take no more new phone extensions and without a server which would protect our computers and the integrity of our databases and everything. So I just think that bears repeating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. If there's nothing further on finance, Law Director, Mr. McConville.
Yes, Mayor, and I'll try to be brief. Just a couple of items, Council. One is, I just want to let you know that there's a hearing tomorrow in the Epic Lifestyle litigation. It's a telephone hearing. It was changed from an in-person to a telephone hearing. That is the litigation that relates to the property at 3886 Sillsby that's been rehabbed by the... Through the receivership. We were optimistic that a court would be ruling against the bank who's intervened late, and I think what we'll find out tomorrow is that the parties are being asked to pull out their calendars and find a new date for an in-person hearing. But in any event, that litigation continues to proceed. And then the only other item is in connection with a comment that was made by the John Carroll students and that the mayor and I have been discussing, which relates to, I believe it's Code Section 128002. It's the section that we currently have the moratorium on with respect to the three unrelated persons. And more broadly, the Code section requires rental registration even in situations that are not typical rental scenarios and have resulted in litigation for the city as a result. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I want to give Council a gentle reminder to make sure that we're scheduling a committee meeting to look at that ordinance and address the moratorium issues and perhaps the other broader issues raised by the ordinance here in the near future. I believe the moratorium expires in May, and so time is of the essence.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Next item, public safety. We'll start with interim chief Rogers. Welcome.
Counsel, Mayor, this will be my first council meeting. I'd just like to make a brief statement. Given the position of interim chief, I'm very excited, looking forward to the opportunity to serve the agency and the community as interim police chief, and it truly is an honor and a privilege to serve the community of University Heights. Reference a few significant issues that occurred over the past two weeks. I'd like to identify a situation that occurred on March 15th at the middle school. We got a call from security reporting some threats that were made, documented in a location inside the building. Officers responded to that location, assisted school staff and security with isolating that location at that point. Based on the circumstances, school staff and security made a decision to evacuate the building at that time related to what they believed to be a potential bomb threat. Our resources assisted the school staff implementing a lockdown procedure, and they did a controlled evacuation. The students were bused to Cleveland Heights High School where they were held at that location, while we brought in additional resources to assist security to make sure that the school is safe at that point. We did use certain resources, including K-9s and officers from other locations, and after about an hour or two, were able to search the building and determine at that time with school staff that it was no longer a safety concern. It should be noted that during that process, school staff and security performed very efficiently and effectively with or implementing their procedures to evacuate the building, and they did so very quickly, and it went very well. Students were brought back later that day, and they did do a dismissal from the school that day, so it was contained for a few hours. Planning on the school's part worked very, very well. We really get resources in there very quickly and determined the school is safe. At this point, the investigation is still ongoing as to who was responsible for the threats that were made inside the school. And one other issue to bring up is, if you haven't noticed already, last week, there was a decision made to remove turning restrictions on South Belvoir and Carroll Boulevard to turn right or turn east from South Belvoir southbound. That's just been removed at this time, so that will no longer be there. So right turning is permissible throughout the day at any time.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Safety Part Two, Mr. Chief Perko.
Thank you, American Council. I'd like to formally congratulate interim police chief Rogers. Through a number of years, I've had an opportunity to work with him in various capacities for both of us, and so I look forward to working with him in the future now. This week, March 18th through to 24th, is the severe weather week in Ohio. The governor just passed a resolution about it. You can find information online from FEMA and NOAA Weather Radio. It's all about storm week and different hazards coming in, flood watch, tornadoes. March 21st is going to be the statewide tornado drill, takes place at 9:50 a.m. I'm sure all the schools in the city will be taking place doing that, and various communities that may have tornado sirens may hear those going off as well. To reiterate, tornado safety, a tornado watch is just the possibility of a threat, and a warning is that one is actually touched down or radar indicates it. There's a whole bunch of information online on ReadyOhio, that's the website, that you can provide to residents or to yourselves, on different hazards such as floods and tornadoes.
There you go.
I spoke to you last month about passing the county hazard mitigation plan, and because we adopted that, we're part of the ReadyOhio, which also has ReadyNotify, which is an emergency notification system to notify residents of various emergencies in the city or special bulletins. That can also be signed up, various residents, they're not a part of that, they can go online to ReadyNotify and register that, their number, whether it's a landline or a cell phone, free of charge, and be notified of those different events. Last, I mentioned the last council meeting that we have worked with and are continuing to work with John Carroll EMS and their police departments, and the Cleveland Clinic Foundation does a newsletter. This is their last one they've done for the winter. It's Northeast Ohio EMS Newsletter that has to do with education for EMS providers. And we conducted a mass casualty drill at John Carroll that the fire department was a part of, and so we had the shift members of Lieutenant Kanter, Chris Kallo, Damon McCone, Tom Ren, Joe McGee, and Lou Kirkwitz issued this. You guys can keep these. I have...
Okay, thank you, Chief. Oh, okay, we have a question by Mr. Sims for Chief Perko. Please go ahead.
Chief, as always, thank you for that report. My only question is, I recently was watching TV, and there was a tragic death, and I believe it was in the city of Cleveland, and it was a fire, due to a fire, and in part, it had to do with the fact that there were a lack of working smoke detectors in the home. I know that in the past that we've done either training and/or the distribution of smoke detectors as a part of our community service. Are we continuing that at all?
We had not been doing that for a number of years. However, we are looking into reinstituting that program. Just as of Friday last week, Lieutenant Boylan submitted a FEMA grant for purchasing smoke detectors to start this program back up again.
Okay, and also, and the other thing that reminded me was, we just recently had the change from two daylight savings time, and that's the time when you should check the batteries on your smoke detectors. And just from a community information standpoint, I was wondering, do we do or do you feel we could do anything to remind our community that now is the time to check their detectors if they have them in their homes?
Yes, I have a couple of service bulletins regarding checking the smoke detectors with the time change as well as the severe weather week that I was going to submit to Mr. Grogan Myers as well as Walter Stinson to pass out for residents.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Perko. Next item is public service. Mr. McCourney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have little to report this week, but I did want to give you the heads-up that one of our five five-ton salt trucks has broken and is going to be unreparable. So heads up that the next council meeting, I plan on coming in and asking for the replacement truck of that, which is already in the budget. So once you pass the budget, we should have the money to do that. It's a six-month lead time on the vehicle, three months for the cab and chassis, another three months to do the salt and snow removal equipment on that truck. So the truck that went down, we called our Lindhurst's truck. It was purchased, used in 2010. It was already nine years old at that point, so we've gotten about all we can get out of that truck. The lifting mechanism for the bed broke, and the rust that is around the lifting mechanism and underneath the bed of the truck makes the bed unweldable, basically, so we cannot replace the bed on the truck and make the truck work again. Salt reserves, we have about 800 tons currently in Cleveland Heights with another 200 tons expected here delivered tomorrow, so we should be in pretty good shape if it's a major matter. Questions?
Very good, thank you, Mr. McCourney. Are there any questions? Mr. Wiseman.
There's more winter? Unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Ms. Cameron.
Yes, I would just like to publicly thank your staff for assisting me personally get out of a snowdrift.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, great guys.
I will pass it along.
And I know that some of our neighbors are not that... Maybe have an issue with some of the trash collection. I am not one. But I think maybe perhaps they could maybe need to do a little more in terms of being effective on their job, a couple of people.
If there are any issues, we welcome the input. Please call the service department, we'll address it.
Okay, I will alert people to do just that.
Certainly.
Excellent, thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Mr. Erdl, go ahead.
Have you ever seen anything like this?
Maple trees.
That's in a tree lawn in University Heights.
What did they put in?
They have maple syrup buckets plugged into the tree.
Oh.
Yeah. You ever seen anything like that?
I have not seen any tree lawn trees tapped for maple syrup. That would be possible. We do have sugar maples out there.
Really?
All right.
Quite a few, actually.
Well, how come we can't get a couple?
You do.
Yeah, I just thought that was great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perko. Wait, one more, Mr. Sims.
I just have one other quick question because you did a wonderful job of scheduling a workshop earlier this year or late last year for trees, and we talked about rescheduling it once the weather improved and maybe more residents would have an interest in coming out, getting that information. Do you have any timeframe for that?
I have not been able to establish a time for both the arborist and the tree contractor to make it, but I will include that as on my list of things to do.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McCourney. Okay, next, Building Commissioner. Our Building Commissioner is out of town at a conference today. I don't know if anybody has a report on his behalf. Okay, well, seeing none, we will move on to Community Development. Now, our Community Development Coordinator, Patrick Grogan Myers, is a PhD student at the Urban Affairs College at CSU, and he is at class this evening. However, I do have a report I can deliver on his behalf. Basically, two things. One, there is a grant that we obtained from the NEORSD for recycling postcards that are customized for the city of University Heights. Those postcards are at the printer and will be mailed out to residents in the next two weeks. This is wholly from a grant that we obtained from the NEORSD, but you should look in the mail in about two to three weeks, I suppose, for this recycling postcard. Secondly, the March housing report has been published and is on the city's website. It's also on social media, and hard copies are available at City Hall. I got a few up here if any of you would like some. And basically, a few things that are on the housing update. You should know that the Heritage Home Program Information Session is... Will be in City Council chambers on 6:30 p.m. on May 17th, 2018. Can learn about the program and talk about projects you have in mind for your home. This is for homes that are 50 years of age or older, which are most homes in University Heights. Also, on May 23rd, 2018, is a rain barrel workshop in the city's service yard at 6:30 p.m., and you can learn how to set up a rain barrel, and for $60, you can take one home. You can register online at kiahagaswcd.org/events. That link is also on these reports. On these reports... Uh, on these reports are, um, some reporting on the thirty distinct residential transfers across the city, averaging a hundred and eleven thousand seven twenty-one per transfer with a median price of a hundred and five five fifty-nine, that in our investment target area, uh, that we saw an increase in average residential transfer price growing by twenty-one point eighteen percent, uh, yes, uh, to eighty-four two twenty-one, and the median grew by twenty-eight thousand four thirty-five to ninety-five four thirty-five. Then in the low moderate income census track, six distinct transfers with an average transfer price of seventy thousand one sixty-seven with a median transfer price of ninety-two thousand five hundred. Uh, notification about property reappraisal that the, uh, Cuyahoga County Appraisals Department is supervising the state mandated six-year property reappraisal process and is expected to be done in June, and the city will have information as it becomes available. So, I've got a few of these here, and I'm happy to bring them over to you as we begin council reports. So, uh, council reports, uh, we'll start with Building Committee.
Thank you, Mayor, there was a building meeting April ninth, is that right? I think we're gonna, we're starting a new procedure for committee meetings, we'll have them two a night, they'll each be an hour in length, first one's April ninth, they'll be building in governmental affairs, I believe it's going to be at the Public Library again, which was where the last, last building committee meeting was. We're going to discuss the moratorium, there are some issues with, uh, taxing, whether people who get rental permits are paying their taxes, so we'll adjust that in the code. Yeah, there's another issue that I think the mayor had, or Mr. Grogan Myers had, I can't remember right now, and, anything else that comes up, we will not be talking about chickens.
And, I would like to see, I would like to return to the Building Commission's, um, Committee's agenda, the subject of those street signs on Bushnell that were raised, or not raised, they haven't actually been put up, but, uh, I would like to discuss those further, pending my own viewing of Bushnell during the hours in question, so.
So add it.
Thank you. Very good. Safety, Mr. Rock.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, um, now that we got through the budgeting process, and hopefully it gets approved next, I guess it would be next week, um, we can start our safety meetings. Um, we have a new police chief, so I'd like to, uh, invite him and the fire chief to the safety meeting so we can gauge their ideas, uh, sort of a kickoff of what we should expect in twenty eighteen in terms of some of our programs. We've allotted money in the budget, so here's our chance to review that budget items and see how we can make things work, so I would like, um, council clerk to poll members, including the chiefs, for a April meeting.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Rock, uh, Mr. Sims, uh, the Service Committee.
No report, Mayor.
Very good. Um, Mr. Erdl, the Recreation Committee.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Cameron, the, um, governmental, no, I'm sorry, which committee are yours, is yours now?
Civic Affairs.
Civic Affairs Committee, thank you, Mrs. Cameron.
We will be asking, uh, clerk of council to poll council for a date that will be available for our next meeting.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Cameron, uh, Mrs. Weiss, governmental affairs.
Thank you, we'll be having a, a meeting right after the Building Meet Committee meeting on April ninth regarding tax payments on new construction.
Okay, very good. Uh, Finance Committee, um, Mrs. Party is not here, I don't know if there's anything further that needs to be said about finance, given everything already said about the budget, but if anybody has anything further, they'd like to report on behalf of the committee? And then finally, Committee of the Whole, normally, Mrs. Party gives that report as well, does anybody have a Committee of the Whole report? Very good, then there are no other committee reports, and, uh, all we have left then is the executive session that we need to enter, so this would conclude, at least for now, the regular portion of the meeting.